Good evening, I'm going to call to order the council meeting for March 5th, 2018. Please stand for the invocations followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Bobby, if you'd please lead us.
Good afternoon, Councilor, or evening, Councilor, how you doing? Gracious God, we thank you for this day, God, thank you for how you continue to bless us and keep us. God, I want to thank you again for a day we haven't seen before. God, we ask you to continue to believe with this council, our council members, be with them, bless them, and keep them. Continue to protect them, continue to keep them safe. God, pray for their health, pray for their wisdom, pray for their families, God, that you continue to watch over them. God, pray for our community, they continue to keep it safe. God, pray for all our persons that are present here at this meeting. We ask you, God, to continue to be with our staff of our city, our first responders, Father God, and we continue to pray for Paul Northern, to continue to be, protect him and heal him. God, we thank you, God, for you all, you do have power to heal, and you can be with him, continue to give him what he needs to recover, and if it's his will to come back to work, to get back to work and be able to do what he enjoys doing. God, we ask you also, Lord, to stand and continue to be with the homeless, watch over them, continue to give them what they need. God, protect them, feed them, give them nourishment, give them employment if they want that, give them education, and continue to help us as a community to try to help the least, the last, and the lost. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Bobby. Now, roll call, please. Yes, Councilperson White.
Present.
Councilperson Yon.
Here.
Councilperson Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Present.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect seven council members present. I think Ed and Scott are out of town. And I have most of the minutes to be approved of our regular proceedings of February 20, 2018. If there's no questions or corrections, there's...
Some moves.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Have approval of the agenda.
There are no changes, motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Claims to be approved, general first.
We have one to be removed. It'll be on your docket next time after the board meets.
The reason it's being removed is because I didn't know about it till I saw it here. It was entered by another department, and I contacted Bob Bedoff, who's the attorney, and it had not been approved by them yet. So, it's going to be removed this time, and I'm giving him the information for approval by them. They meet once a month, correct?
Mm-hmm.
New total?
Yes, new total is $1,569,957.07.
Okay. Council doesn't have any questions, I will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Has changed.
I got a motion and a second to approve the amended claims for $1,569,957.07. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Parks. Parks says $69,178.96. No changes on that, that I'm aware of.
All claims are in order.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and two seconds to pass. The Parks claim is $69,178.96. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Report of the clerk.
Okay, thank you. Since Ed is not here, I think I entertain a motion, we'll have to table this. I did reach out to Ed, so he hasn't been here, and he was, he's in Ohio with an eight-week training, he has to be in Ohio, so hopefully this next meeting he will be there, so I'll take a motion to table.
Some more.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to table 2018 OR 9. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Heather, we have an ordinance of additional appropriation, 2018 OR 14. Is there any changes?
No changes.
Is this where the dredging of Duffy's River?
No. This is the second half of the water.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve on the final.
Well, I got to do public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to move this along.
That's fine. I appreciate that. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here to wish, speak for or against additional appropriation for Parks? It's for the last installment payment for the play feature in their, just their kid area.
Seeing none, I'm officially closed, and now may I entertain your, your motion.
Motion to approve on the final.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
We move right into new business, which we have a guest speaker tonight, it's Marilyn Zapch, she's going to talk to us about City Pride litter program. Marilyn, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you. I'm happy to be able to come and talk to you about this. Member of City Pride, we are joining in with the city to kick off a litter campaign or a litter program for the city of Jeffersonville. The people on the committee are Andy Crouch, and Paul Northern was on the committee, and Michael Bryan is on the committee, Kevin Fetter, Jeremy Neff. We've had the safety director in to talk with us, and we have Amy Huffman, who's helping us with our printed material and also pro media. So, I've also, in addition to the safety, safety person for the city, I have given the information to the police department. I didn't know who to give it to, so I gave it to Kevin Anderson, because he's a friend, and hopefully he's going to try to get it to the right person. So, I find myself doing that a lot, using my friends to... I want to tell you a little bit about it. It is a kickoff. The purpose of it is to generate interest in getting people to be a part of the program, to actually work on the program, and to generate interest and concern about our litter issue in Jeffersonville. So, and mark this date in your calendar, if you will, Saturday, April 7th, from 10:00 to 12:00. That's all the time we're going to take from you, if you can possibly come. There is a rain date of Saturday, the 14th. Did you all get these in your...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for putting them in, Becky. Anybody that wants more information about it can call me, or I've also put Andy Crouch on a lot of the emails that are going out, because he's kind of the leader from the city. We will either meet up at five parks, the overlook, Lanston Park, Vising Park, Allison Brook Park, or Water Park. The city will provide the gloves and the bags. We will not be providing picker-uppers, so people that are my age have to bring their own. And we have contacted the schools, we've contacted the churches, those are usually people that like to do community service, and the Boy Scouts are going to participate, ROTC from Jeff High. About, I think, six neighborhoods I've heard from so far are going to participate. And what we'd also like to do is have people that are participating in a group bring a couple of signs, so that our other citizens will know what we're doing. So, there's a lot of anti-litter slogans that are kind of cute on face, I mean, on the internet. So, do you have any questions about the litter kickoff, or what comes next, or any concerns?
I'm sure that if somebody can only devote an hour, or if they've got, somebody, you would just show up and do what you can.
Oh, yeah. Come to any one of those parks, if you're sing, you know, but if you're going with a group and you want to pick up your churchyard, or you want to pick up around Child Place, I mean, that's fine, just carry a couple of signs and say, "We're in, you know, we're what, anti-litter."
Thanks for the plug, by the way.
(Laughter). I go there once every two weeks, so...
Is this an, going to be an ongoing...
That was my...
Yes.
And...
We started it as an ongoing, we didn't know how to get interest built up. I developed the program, and it's fairly easy to do, because there are so many anti-litter programs on the internet. I mean, you really, it'd have to be really backwards to get something, you know, that works for people. And so, I'd had done that last year, but we didn't know how to get people interested. And then, we decided that we would take a step back and not try to get the task forces on education and financial, you know, there's, there's, what do you call them, grants, you know, to get into all of that, until we know that people are interested, or they think there, perceive there's a problem. I certainly perceive I'm a problem, we, I mean, that our neighborhood's a problem. We pick up, Mike picks up about a bag every week, so... Then, after that, we will try to, like, for instance, I've already got a Boy Scout signed up that's going to work for his badge, he will be on the committee, and I, probably we would put him someplace like contact with the high school, or, you know, and ongoing Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts group. But, you know, we want an education task force, because there's, there's a lot of different aspects of this. It's not, we're not thinking that we're just going to go out and make the city beautiful for two hours, and that's it. I mean, it has to be developed around education, and eventually, if we get there, enforcement of the rules that are already out there, by the way, we just really haven't done much about them. So, there's a lot to be worked on, and a lot of different task forces that would have to be headed up by citizens.
I'm using your words, but the grabber, or the picker-upper, how many, how many of those do you need?
Well, we decided that we really don't want to invest in them, because they said people don't really use them that much anyway. The people that can bend down, like, if you were going out there, but see, like, the older people, they would have to have one, so I just, they said to just bring them. And we were first going to ask for some more money to get that going, and I'm hoping that there'll be a way to get a grant, because, you know, a lot of those things you grant, you know, you can get some money for, and we're thinking, you know, that maybe we'd include the picker-uppers, and maybe some T-shirts, at least for the task force at the beginning, but we're really not spending much money. We're just, the safety director, I mean, said he's got thousands of gloves, and Jeremy said from the street department that it's no problem on the bags. So, we're really not, not asking for money yet.
Well, you know, Marilyn, if you contact, well, sometimes it has to be the corporate office, but Lowe's, or Home Depot, or Rural King, if you contact them, they will donate to cause like this. If it's organized, it's going to be a yearly thing, you know, you've got city support.
The only one we have on our list is Rural King, because the other two are in Clarksville. And this is just Jeffersonville, so, yes, I, I think that would be a good idea for the future, especially if we look and see that there is no grant money. I don't know, I thought maybe there might be.
Or Menards, which is technically on the Jeff side, too, so...
What?
Menards might be another place to look, since they're on the Jeff side.
Yeah, you know, I get confused out there, when it gets too far, you know.
I had to say that to the Jeff side, so...
So, good, I'll keep that in mind.
They might be interested.
Is there any other questions?
I think it may be a good idea, and I could help facilitate with this, maybe touch base.
You're going to have to talk louder.
All right, I'm sorry. It may be a good idea to touch base with the chief of police about maybe some training on disposal of maybe sharp objects.
Yes, the health department is participating, and they're bringing the red containers...
Okay, sounds like you are...
And the pliers, and, well, the safety director did, you know, bring that up, so I thank you for, if there's anything else, though, let us know, because we don't want to do anything wrong.
Marilyn, thank you for taking us cool by the horn.
(Laughs).
I appreciate it.
It's been fun.
You've really been getting the word out, I know you came and spoke at JNLA, and...
Yeah, I'm going to round to the different neighborhood groups, too, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we have, on our new business, we have Jim Calvery in Nickleys. It's an ordinance petition to vacate a public right-of-way in the city of Jeff, which is Sellers Court. Hello, Mr. Nicky. State your name and address for the record, please.
Jim Calvery, Vice President, Nickleys Developments, 6060 Dutchman's Lane, Louisville, Kentucky, Row 205. Thank you. Again, thanks to your staff, quite frankly, that's helped, helped guide me in this process. On the overhead, you can see the, the hashed portion of Sellers Court that we're asking to vacate. We have already recorded the plat which dedicates the additional right-of-way of Jeffersonville Commons, which tees into Sellers Court. That's been done and recorded, and I've worked with the folks that live on Sellers Court. We've put some temporary lighting up, so that they can come out and make sure they make the turn, and the reason for the vacation of that portion is the city is installing the new traffic lights along East 10th Street, and that's the first traffic light right there. So, the new Herb Lewis will come down, tie into East 10th, and we've got to get that little piece of Sellers Court out of the way. And we published the notice, we own all the property on all sides of it, except for that part that remains Sellers Court.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Nickleys, for our open up public hearing? Okay. I'm going to officially open up the public hearing, and I do believe somebody signed up, I'm sorry, I can't...
It's, excuse me.
Mr. Calvery. Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, does anybody wish to speak for or against this vacate on Sellers Court? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'm going to officially close public hearing. Nobody has any questions, or...
The only thing I was going to mention is there's just a typo on the ordinance itself. In the last paragraph, it says Clark County reordered instead of recorder. I don't know if you wanted to suggest that to the correct office title.
Motion to approve 2018 OR 15.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 15. Is any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you.
Can you come in and sign tomorrow?
Sure.
Yeah.
I can do ordinance, so I apologize.
Oh, that's okay, I just was looking right down and saw it, so I can, I'd say...
Thank you.
Which ordinance was this?
Thank you, the 15.
15.
Next, we have Rob Waze. We have resolution approving a statement of benefits for post-personal property and real property tax abatement. And this is for Bluegrass Supply Chain, correct?
Yes, it is. Good evening, I'm here with Mo Jackson, he's with the Vice President of Bluegrass Supply Chain. They're currently in Jeffersonville, they're leasing space in River Ridge. They have 14 employees. They're looking to go ahead and move actually behind Nappide, off of New Metal Road, and at that particular facility, they're looking to construct a building that's going to be worth approximately about $8.4 million. They're looking for a 10-year tax abatement on the building. And then, on personal property, they're looking at approximately about $550,000 of personal property, or they're looking at five-year tax abatement. With them moving into the new facility, they're also looking at adding an additional 70 employees with basically average rate, hourly rate of about $19.70.
That's quite an expansion. It's exciting. Are you, are you, forgive me if I'm, is there another location that you're just moving here, or are you just existing this current?
This is with our customer, this is our third location that we opened with our customer in Jeffersonville in June of 2017. This is another project that they've been awarded, working with Ford, that we have been asked to be the third party. So, at this time, we are currently looking at another location that's not in the state of Indiana, as for what is the best opportunity. You know, we, we thank the city of Jefferson, Mayor Moore, the council for giving us this opportunity, Matt Hall with One Southern Indiana, and Rob for their help in this development. But with our, I guess you would say, our development of our company last year, and the success we've had in Jeffersonville with team members, retaining team members, you know, we're excited to be in the area and look to further that opportunity within Bluegrass and Jeffersonville.
That's exciting.
Said you're looking for another location, what can we do to get that location to Jeff, too?
Well, that other location would be the comparison of this opportunity at this site in Jeffersonville, and another site in Odom County. That we're weighing our opportunities right now on what would be the best opportunity for Bluegrass. Obviously, the incentives is a main draw for us, as well as the opportunity to, you know, work within the area and grow our company.
So, Jeffersonville's in competition to land their next facility. The redevelopment commission approved these abatements at our last meeting unanimously. I know Scott's not here, but I think if he were, he would say, you know, we all were very supportive of asking them to stay here in Jeffersonville. I don't know what the resolution number is. Number one?
We both were going to ask the same question. What does Bluegrass Supply Chain do?
Okay. Bluegrass Supply Chain Services is a third-party logistics company. There's three spokespeople, if you would, all working within the supply chain. We have Bluegrass Supply Chain, which is the value-added warehousing division. We have a division called Quality Support, which is also like sub-assembly, and anytime a supplier or manufacturer is having quality issues, we act as that inspector. And then, to finish that supply chain distribution, we also own our own trucking division called Bluegrass Dedicated. With that, we're about 600 strong now, serving within five states. New opportunity in Greenville, North Carolina, approaching very soon, that would give us that sixth opportunity. We were founded in 2002 by our president, John Higgins. In 2012, I guess you would say our company really took off with the offerings, the small offerings we had, that has now led us to work with tier-one suppliers, as well as with OEMs.
Any other questions?
It's a good place to be for supply chain management and logistics.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Matt, you're...
Number one, I make the motion to approve 2018 R1.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 R1. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing good jobs to Jeffersonville.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Merkley, we have resolution approving, ratifying interlocal agreement between the city of Jeff and the Jefferson redevelopment commission, and the civil town of Clarksville, and the Clarksville redevelopment commission.
This is a requirement that Kipta is asking us to do. This is a project that is receiving Kipta funding, but it's really the first time that Kipta has funded a project that is between two communities, and it was thought would be best for us to have an interlocal agreement. This impacts, or is regarding pedestrian improvements on Montgomery Avenue in Clarksville, and on Ninth Street in Jeffersonville. The bulk of the improvements are in Clarksville, that's where the bulk of the money will be. Clarksville will administer the funds and so forth, but we will receive a portion of those funds for the Ninth Street improvements. So, we do need an interlocal agreement, and redevelopment has approved this as well already.
There was a comment made at the redevelopment meeting about Kipta being a regional transportation kind of organization, but they had never really done a project that involved multiple municipalities on a regional, you know, a truly regional project, if you would. Interesting.
I apologize, what's the nature of the, of the project?
Sidewalks and pedestrian improvements, I think, some streetlights and so forth.
Okay.
Motion to approve 2018 R2.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 R2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Les. Les, you're still up. You have a ordinance for changing the zoning map designation of certain tract of property, being multiple parcels on Spring Street, going from R3, C1, C2s, to change them all to downtown commercials.
This comes to you with a favorable, favorable recommendation from the planning commission. The redevelopment department or redevelopment commission owns several properties downtown that have been acquired over the past several years, or a lot of it is in the arts and cultural district. We are just trying to get them all zoned one classification. Right now, they're sort of sporadic. We are asking that they be zoned to downtown commercial, planning and zoning, and Nathan Purit believes that would be appropriate zoning classification. Once we get these zoned, then we are going to be reaching out to property owners then as well, and ask them voluntarily if they would consider rezoning their property to downtown commercial as well, so we're all on one page in that area. And this is a zoning ordinance, only requires one reading, but it is a public hearing.
So, council, do you have questions for open up public hearing? This time, we're going to officially open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who wish to speak for or against this rezone on the properties on Spring Street, moving them to the downtown commercial? Seeing none, I'm officially close public hearing.
Motion to approve 18 OR 16.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 16. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Les, you got an ordinance amending the Jefferson zoning ordinance, 2000 OR 61, to amend the standards for the filling gas stations in Article 7, as recommended by the planning commission.
I believe this started with the council. You recommended that it go, obviously, by state law, and has to go back to the planning commission. The planning commission conducted a public hearing, considered it, and is now sending it back to you with a favorable recommendation. At this time, it's an ordinance, previously it was a resolution, now it's an ordinance to amend our zoning code to address the distance requirements for gas stations or filling stations. Our zoning code currently deals with that with a cluster definition. Gas stations within a cluster, that became confusing, and there was some, needed to be clarified, and after consultation with the council, it was decided to try to keep it as simple as possible, which is what, which is what is in front of you, to limit one gas station per one-mile radius. And obviously, existing gas stations would be grandfathered in. Currently, there is a moratorium on gas stations. We need to lift that moratorium, that would require, I think you could either do that by motion tonight, or if you want to, we can come back and do it at another meeting with an actual resolution.
Did the moratorium not, did we not have a time limit on that? I thought it was...
There's a time limit, I think it's, but I think it's still, I think it's still in place.
Was it through acrimony?
It expires this month.
Yeah. So...
Just let it expire.
We'll just let the moratorium expire on its own, and this will take effect.
Should be 17.
Yes. Nobody has any questions? I want to officially open up public hearing. Is there anybody who wish to speak for or against this zoning ordinance on the filling in the gas stations? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'm officially close public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll just say before we vote that it's, I consistently vote no on these ordinances relating to restricting a particular business or type of industry. I feel that typically businesses make the best decisions of where they will be the most profitable, so I'll be voting against this again tonight, and I would like for us to continue to look at potential ways of resolving what I think is, the main concern is that is if a gas station is unsuccessful, or shuts down, that we have the issue of their gas tanks being in the ground. So, I would prefer to look at ways that we can remedy that. I know that there are things we can and cannot do, but I would support that type of legislation or process, as opposed to restricting them altogether.
I would, I would be interested, and I've said this a number of times, that the planning commission, don't know if it's possible, but if we could somehow... don't know if it's possible, but if we could somehow approve these gas stations when they come in with some kind of a commitment that they have to remove the tanks if they do shut down, I would be interested in voting for something like that.
Did we discuss the potential of having some sort of, like, bond put in place for these stations when they come in? I mean...
Yeah, we had talked about it. I can't remember exactly what the obstacle was for that when I suggested that last time. I remember that it was maybe that we really just wouldn't have much backing to be able to hold the businesses accountable to removing them if they go bankrupt or whatever it might be. But even just for our protection of having some sort of, something that's written that we could pursue in a court of law, I mean, I just, I don't know what the most effective way to execute that would be.
So one thought I've got is, Les, if you could chime in at any time, there may be some preemption, federal law regarding the tanks.
Or IDIM.
Or IDIM. So that would be...
There's already regulations in place for regulating them, so I think you're preempted on that.
So that makes sense.
Yeah.
This may be preempted completely on doing anything other than dealing with the zoning piece of it. Superfund legislation all changed, but the place, Les, you're older than me.
That was very carefully worded.
Well, it's actually true.
Actually true.
It's actually true. But, and I would suggest that the likelihood is, is that when they undid the superfund, they put in a whole lot of different requirements for them to bond.
Yeah. The requirements today are a lot stricter than they were, say, 20, 25 years ago. And, you know, we see these empty gas stations, and we think that's, that's what's keeping that property from being developed. I mean, there are mechanisms in place. I mean, if, I mean, there already are laws in place that if you go in and buy a dead gas station and there are tanks in there, everybody's got insurance. And it may take time, but they will get cleaned up. I mean, 10th...
The buyer or the...
CVS is at right now. That was a perfect example. We were tied up in federal court for a few years on that, but I mean, there are mechanisms in place. It's just, they just don't want to, developers don't want to go in and deal with that. So, I mean, I think it's, what we're doing is what a lot of communities are doing, which is addressing it by the zoning code.
There's no further, I'll entertain a motion. There's not currently a motion on the floor, so...
Motion to approve 2018 OR17 on the first and second.
Second, this is...
If you see one read on it, yeah.
Seventeen or eighteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
So I got a motion, a second to pass 2018 OR17. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We got Heather, you got ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department. We have a lot of them on here, and they're all the same type of issue, originally budgeted monies in an asset account. They are, we are now categorizing any asset over $1,000, so if you purchase anything less than $1,000, it's categorized as a supply, so that's why these are all moving appropriations to supplies. You will have a couple more on the next meeting, too. I didn't, I had to change this ordinance three times before it got to Vicki, so I didn't want to change it again.
And are you sure that planning and zoning, he has two out of his trainings, a total of 3,000, so this is early, still in the year. He's not going to be needing that training dollars?
Those are the numbers that were given to me by the department head.
Okay.
Just a comment, we were asked to appropriate additional money for training, and we're giving money out of training back in this situation. Just, just a comment.
I have a question. So your previous statement, so we are now changing all assets that are greater than $1,000 into categorized, or that are less than $1,000 into supplies, is that correct?
Yes, so then we can capture all the assets and actually report them correctly for our annual report.
And so, is this implying that there are training assets that are less than $1,000 that are being...
No.
Retitled? They're actually just taking monies from that?
Correct.
Okay. So these aren't all that transferred?
Correct. You're correct. I'm sorry.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
And I do want to speak on the last three, which is from the Public Safety, the 3,000, the 2,000, and the 5,000.
Thank you.
The county is actually taking over a payment, and Central Alarm will be doing more, I don't know if it's called Code Red, I can't remember the name of it.
Right.
So Mayor had called me, and also when he was in talking with Heather, they both had called me. Since that money won't be used for the Code Red this year, he would like to see this in these line items, which I did stress for emergency only. We do currently have an ordinance, we have an emergency credit card, but we felt that this would be a good use of this money for emergencies for he has going into other supplies, business meals, and then equipment.
Right, the business meals would just, that's the ordinance that captures any meals within the 50-mile radius of Jeffersonville, because we've got a travel ordinance that discusses it outside.
I just wanted to bring that to their attention.
Yes.
Because I didn't know if they all knew about the Code Reds or not, so...
So the monies would not be used unless there was an emergency?
And then even though our sheet says that the public hearing is for tonight, the public hearing is not until...
This is a transfer, though.
Oh, yes. Transfer. I'm ahead of myself, sorry. It's been one of them days. Do we have any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
To approve 2018 OR18.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion, a second to pass 2018 OR...
What readings?
Is this, do we need three readings on this?
Yes, sir.
First and second, I'm sorry.
I got a motion, a second to pass 2018 OR18 on the first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
I'm here for the rest of the night.
We have the, I'd like to do these in three different...
I agree, yes.
Acceptance into the record, so we'll start with the...
Annual financial report. It's a lovely document, worked really hard on that. Hope you all read every single page.
Of course you will.
If you do, please look at it and give me a call at 66 pages. I know you can't look at it all right now, but give me a call with any questions or comments or any of that kind of stuff. And just need a motion to accept into the record.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to accept the annual financial report into the record. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Now we will do the encumbrances.
Two-year, oh, two-year-old.
I have a question.
Sure.
It has on the agenda that this includes the 20, top 20 employees, the 20...
It's coming.
We're doing three separate.
Oh, okay.
It's coming.
They want to do it all separately, Mia. That was confusing, I agree.
It should be behind, did you get it in your packet? Okay.
Next, I want to do the outstanding checks, two-year-old for 2015.
Okay. Not very many this time. So those will be voided and sent to Indiana unclaimed properties.
Okay.
Motion to...
Go ahead.
I have a question. 40,000, can you cash a $40,000 check in the bottom?
You would have to discuss that with the vendor, I'm not sure.
Isn't that perfect? I mean, generally speaking, that's a big check.
I agree. I saw that on here, and I thought, wow, somebody wasn't paying attention.
Yeah. But we wouldn't miss that, would we, Scott?
Cash the check and hire somebody to cash that in the future, and you get paid for your salary.
The Bank 11 is the payroll bank, so those are probably part-time seasonal people. May have lost their check or something.
We have at least one employee on here.
We checked them, I thought we didn't have any current employees.
Check it from the bottom, I believe.
Okay, I can check that. I thought we checked them off. Because the ones that were still outstanding and were current employees, we've voided and reissued.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the report.
Second. Got a motion, a second to accept the 2015 outstanding checks for two-years-old into record. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. We'll do the encumbrances for 17 and 18 now, please.
Majority of that large number is your paving. And we have invoices for every one of these. And this number is reflected on your 12-line statement.
I have a motion to accept it into the record.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second, sorry.
Got a motion, a second to accept encumbrances from 2017 to 2018 into record. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. And the last is the top 20 salaries, the top 40 vendors, and employee businesses.
And this is what I'm assuming the new ordinance that hasn't been established yet is referring to?
That was my first question. I saw travelers on there, I was just kind of...
...transportation...
Which one? Tell me.
...transportation, you're paying $12,000, that's not a vendor.
Well, that was for the 10th Street project. Is that still not a vendor?
I mean, that's not what, this is true.
Okay.
I mean, and that's up to him when he comes. I'm just trying to write what I told him.
So would be like exclude other municipalities?
I think it's...
Yeah, I'm just curious, like, that would be like technically an exemption of other municipalities or something?
What about travelers?
Insurance.
For claims? You want to take that one off?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Clark County 911?
Yeah, I didn't take that.
Take that one off? Okay.
Clark Floyd Landfill?
And I'm assuming the Applicating Piper received a $485,601 check and passed through for his property.
I'm assuming that, yes.
That wouldn't be a vendor, that's...
And the same thing for Clark County courts.
I would imagine that Youngland Interstate Craft took a $48,000 check and probably passed through for some kind of client.
And I don't know if anybody heard, but Councilperson Owen said Clark Floyd Landfill. Any questions?
Yeah.
Well, we don't have to take ours to that landfill, do we?
Well, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, they are a vendor, aren't they?
They are, they would be.
Do we expand it to 40 with the hope of capturing most of the vendors that we wanted to see? Was that...
Yeah, I think so.
I'm wondering, like, and I agree that we want to make sure that we hold what Ed was looking for, but it seems like we're going through and selecting ones we want to take out, and I don't know if the sustainability of doing this every year, if that's the most efficient way of doing it. So if we feel comfortable with having the top 40 vendors...
Why don't we do this? Why don't we hold off on this, ask your, whatever you're going to do, and whatever you decide you're all going to do in your ordinance. And I will sit down with the controller, and we will go through what should be there.
Sounds good to me.
Who should be revealed?
I think there may be a mistake on one of the employees as far as, I think it's his police, and I'm pretty sure he's a fire.
I apologize. Which one? I'm sorry.
I think it's McCutcheon, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure.
No, he is fire, you're correct. Yep, you are correct.
Okay, so we're going to hold off on this?
So I'll review this entire list with Mr. Merkley when it's done.
I can see somebody from the employee or...
Okay, so we will hold off on that?
Sure.
We will move on, Heather, to this additional appropriation for the building authority Kim Cup Fund improvements for the 70,000.
Yes, this was not originally budgeted, and, yes, and it is for the 19th meeting. It was not originally budgeted in the budget process. There was nothing budgeted in this fund. So this is the revenues that they receive.
I know you're all on one thing, but we still, on the top 20, are you all tabling that, or what are you doing?
I think she's withdrawing it from...
Are you withdrawing?
We're not accepting it into the record, they're going to provide another one.
That's fine, we just need to have something.
So we need to make a motion tabling that, or...
We just don't accept it into the record.
Okay.
Unacceptable.
And I think this is...
It's unacceptable.
She got dogged.
The record will not be graced with...
Okay, this 2018 OR19, and then, which I think she already explained that, so if there's no further questions, I will accept a motion.
What was...
19.
What was that explanation?
It's the cash that's received into that fund. It was not included in the budget process, so nothing's been budgeted in this fund.
Oh, for that fund, okay, sorry.
This is the improvement fund.
Both revenue and expenses weren't approved, or only the expenses were not included.
It's in, it's in a completely different budget, or in a different fund.
Right.
So it gets $70,000 every year, and this is appropriating that $70,000.
Did we, in the budget, show the 70 revenue?
No, because there wasn't a request for the budget. That fund was not included in the budget.
At all. Motion to approve 18 OR19 on the first and second.
Second. I got a motion, a second to pass 2018 OR19, the first and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. We'll move on to Mr. Wilder, do you have any attorney comments tonight?
So, all I can tell you is, Ms. Colling, you got to give me the eleven position of Roberts Rules of Order, and that's like giving a fat kid some...
Did you really?
I don't know what is going to happen now, if I have something here.
And since he brought it up on the record, I prayed for that personally, that it's not been paid for by city funds.
I wasn't...
I just, I just kind of love that, that's why I was highlighting it. Please, please, please get with Mr. Ed Z, Councilperson Ed Z, so we can get that filings, because we've been tabling it now, so hopefully he will be here this next meeting and then get that wrapped up. Did you have anything else, Wes?
No, just beware.
Okay.
I want the spark note addition.
Fully armed, fully armed now.
Book report.
Is there any department heads here? I don't see any. And public comment, we've already taken care of, they were signed up, the ones that were here already. So we will move on to council comments. So Councilperson White?
Last meeting, we had the Executive Director of LMC here and gave a presentation on their, in the middle of their capital campaign. I just wanted to have a discussion and see if there was a will in the council to, to provide for the requested $5,000 amount for their capital campaign. I don't believe Mr. Maples was here last time. They, one of the numbers that came out of their programs was they serve 650 approximately kids in Jeffersonville, and this would help go to their programming, their summer camps, help provide scholarships, help to fund all of their sporting programs. And from my perspective, I think it would be a benefit for our sport leagues because it reaches the kids that are younger, are too young to participate in the city sport league, so that would help in that aspect as well for the development of the youth.
Mr. White, I think at the last meeting, you mentioned that the UEZ might match that contribution if we made it.
Yes, if there's a will, I would make the motion contingent on the UEZ also contributing $5,000.
I would second that.
Was that a second?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know he had the...
So moved.
Sorry.
Got a motion and a second for the 5,000, did you say from where?
Did you say from where?
From special projects.
Okay.
Contingent on the UEZ also contributing $5,000.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, I was under the impression that we were going to develop a process where we invite not-for-profits in, kind of put out a RFP or so, and do that. And the process is to determine, do we do it quarterly, every six months, whatever? And then also determine the dollar amount, the pot of money we have that we plan on spending for the year. And I know that I wasn't sure, I actually thought there was, I thought Callie was going to kind of help head that up, is what I thought.
Yeah, I was going to address it in my comments. But essentially, still trying to work forward and put the numbers together for that. But I, I mean, I agree with you. I think that that's something that, and it seems like a majority of council members are wanting to move forward with.
I believe the Finance Committee is supposed to be meeting soon.
Wednesday, on Wednesday at 3:00.
That is pretty soon. And one of the things that I was thinking about is that we could maybe help identify or recommend to Callie some potential dollar amounts, or whether she wants to take those or not, it's fine, but we may be able to help spur that process along.
And Heather's kind of can bring some information, too.
Yeah. Historic and so.
Will there be four council members present at that meeting?
Well, it's an advertised meeting, so any council person.
I can attend that meeting, so I'd be happy to, this Wednesday at 3:00. If we want to discuss, if we can get the numbers together. Heather, we can talk after the meeting, but, and I know Vicki has a part to do with that as well, in determining what we have spent previously.
I sent it out to you all.
Oh.
Yeah, right after our last meeting. I sent the sheet out to you all.
My apologies. I missed one.
Life's coming on that. And I'm supportive of the Y. I'm a member of the Y, and don't go there enough, but my kids have gone there, and it's a great program, so it's not a reflection on that. It's just a matter of, they've already given their presentation, so they probably won't have to again. But just, and thinking it through the last few years, it just feels like we probably ought to open it up to some other places, too, if needed.
I agree.
I think maybe we're going to do something like that, which I have no problem with, supported, but we maybe should do that starting in 2019, so everybody knows about it. And instead of doing something in the middle of the year.
And so the specific amount is budgeted?
Right. So, yeah, and so everyone has notice in the city, and we do it in a methodical way, so everybody has a fair shot at it.
So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, real call. Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Yon?
No.
Councilperson Maples?
Aye.
Council President Gill?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
No.
Councilperson Samuel?
No.
Four ayes. Mr. White, would you get them to get me like an invoice?
Does it pass? Did it pass?
No.
No.
You've got to have fun. You've got to have fun, my son.
Oh, God, what am I thinking? I tried. I tried, sir.
It's no day.
I tried real hard.
You're high education. You're here with me. It's no day.
I know.
You stood before us.
I went to Catholic school. Did you have anything else in your comments?
Just thank everybody who supported that request, and that's it.
Councilperson Yon?
I first want to say, Heather, I appreciate you, and I appreciate your attention to detail and how thorough you are, and the multitude of reports that you give to this council, and the numbers that you present. You do an excellent job. I appreciate it very much, so I keep them coming. The only other thing I had I wanted to mention, I saw actually on Facebook today or yesterday, I believe, that the Arts and Cultural District was awarded the grant from the state of Indiana, which is very exciting. I saw Lieutenant Governor Suzanne Crouch with the mayor, so that's awesome and a great contribution to the city and what we've got going on. And then Nathan already addressed the other thing I wanted to mention, so I will be at that Finance Committee meeting this Wednesday, and we can talk further about moving forward with an RFP process.
Councilperson Maples?
I'd like to apologize for missing the last meeting. I found out I had strep and flu at the same time that day. I figured you guys didn't want me to come in here. Secondly, I'd like to thank all of our employees that helped during the flood efforts recently. It was kind of funny. I was looking at a picture of Duffy Landing. I said it'd be really bad if the water made it to that American flag, and then I get on Facebook like an hour later, and Jeff Far had rescued our American flag at that landing, which was, I thought.
Yeah, I think that actually made the National, the Weather Channel, I think, that went nationally.
So being in public safety, that was what I thought of mine, and coincidentally, they already had it covered. I was actually going to make a phone call about it, and they had it taken care of, so kudos to all of our employees. That's it.
Councilperson Owen?
I think everybody is aware our Parks Director, Paul Northam, suffered a heart attack recently, and has been out. Last I've heard, his condition is improving, but in case you weren't aware, Michael O'Brien has stepped into the position of interim director for now, through Paul's recovery at least, until we know what that long-term prognosis is. We had a Parks Authority meeting just before the council meeting. Some highlights from that. Just wanted to point out that the Parks Authority did approve for Jeff Go's Country. It's going to be Rodney Atkins this year.
Oh, wow.
Which I am very excited about. He's awesome. There are probably some songs that you would recognize if you heard. Just don't put it within name. But that's exciting for June 23rd. We did talk about there's some damage to Fisherman's Wharf and the area around the overlap where the river stage is from the flooding that we've had. The Parks Department is going to be working with some contractors to get that quickly repaired before the river stage is utilized, hopefully for thunder over Louisville and then our summer season. But we may be coming to the council and potentially redevelopment to ask for some sharing in those costs, unexpected costs that are obviously not budgeted for. A lot of electrical work is going to have to be done at Fisherman's Wharf, and in conjunction with the river stage. We don't have an estimate on all of those costs yet, but that will be forthcoming.
Would any of those costs be covered by any state or federal aid?
Well, we did discuss that. The state did, you know, declare an emergency, and we are pushing, working towards hitting a minimum threshold to get assistance from FEMA. I don't know that we've hit that threshold yet with damage costs, but those are still being tallied. If we do hit that threshold, then we could receive some federal aid, and that would replenish the budget for whatever we, for any certain amount that we might have to appropriate, but we don't have those answers, won't have those answers for probably several months, and wouldn't see that money come back for at least several months. On the plus side, when it comes to the Parks Department, Mr. Simpson did report that we are hitting a record number of cash commitments for 2018. Right now, we are at $173,500 committed for 2018, which is, has surpassed what we had committed at this point last year.
How much does that amount, I'm sorry?
$173,500, and those are cash commitments that he reported tonight. He also mentioned that this year we are set to top the $1 million mark for cash and in-kind donations since 2015. So they're very proud of that. The City Partners Program continues to grow year over year, and hopefully it will continue to do so.
And didn't you all pass in an agreement with Greater Clark Schools on the Nahan Field House?
We did do that a little bit last month. We approved in interlocal agreement with Greater Clark County Schools for them to utilize the Nahan Field House during the school day, should a elementary school be built in downtown. That use agreement is very specific on who does what and what times, and it's an exciting opportunity to partner with Greater Clark Schools to help them save some money in the project, and also get some additional utilization of the field house, which has been our goal all along with the rehabilitation project, which has garnered $1.5 million in private support.
The John Schnatter Nahan Field House.
That's correct. The John Schnatter Nahan Field House. We're all going out for Papa John's after the meeting. And the only other thing I wanted to say, the gas station ordinance, I agree with Callie on being resistant to regulating when and where a business should go somewhere. What put us over the edge this time for me was just the long-term economic and environmental impacts of those types of businesses, and that's all.
Councilperson Ellis?
I agree with Dustin on supplying money for the Y MCA, but I think it should be after we have the Finance Committee meeting, so that we can put money in a specific fund or pot, and we'll be able to dish that money out of that pot. I'd like to see that ordinance brought back up at the next meeting, so that we all know where we're going and what we're giving to who a little bit more.
Okay. I agree. Councilperson Samuel?
Just to follow up on what Callie said about the grant, it was a $220,000 grant, so a significant grant from the Indiana Office of Tourism Development, and that is going for studio booths for artists in the Gray Wells Building. That's the Gray Whale Building, I guess what they call it now. Not my name, but that's what they called it. And then also across the street, Catty Corner, across the street in the, where they tore some of the houses down, and it's green space now, it's going to go for, I think, the stage and some other fixing up of that area as well. So that's what it's earmarked for. It's a great grant, and I'd like to thank Dylan Rutherford, Don Spiker, and Andy Crouch specifically, because I was told those are the three that worked real hard on it.
They went to Indianapolis, too.
I'm sure Mr. Merkley provided counsel, so thank him. That's a big deal.
He looks tired.
The tie looks good, though, Les. But that just shows that even at a state level, because it was a very competitive thing, at state level, Jeffersonville continues to be looked at with favor, and lots going on. So that's great. That's all I have.
Which was going to bring up, which we touched on, it was the Finance Committee meeting will be this Wednesday at 3:00, and it'll be in our council conference room. And so far, we're going to discuss, try to identify some fund sources about the nonprofits, and then Joe Hurt requested to be there. I don't know if he's still coming about a online application.
Have you contacted him? I haven't.
No, I'm going to contact him tomorrow. I tried today, and I don't know when he's on shift or when he's not, but I think those are the only two things. And like I said, that is advertised, so everybody's welcome.
He's in Washington, DC.
Oh, well, then that's why I didn't, but, and I just want to kind of echo on the flooding, and I tell you, I cannot commend our administration and our department heads enough.